We're meeting in special session, December first, twenty twenty five. All board members are present except for Ms. Tillman. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Maybe a motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. I think the agenda is approved. Their next order of business is recognitions.
Want to recognize our team. Ladies, I'm gonna call you up one by one, and then once you get your certificate, the first one start on there and we'll make the line for a big group cut. So we are recognizing them for coming in first place at the Rumble in the Jungle Jungle competition. And first up is Anderson Smith. Araya Spock. Ally Russell. Ollie Anna Rock. Chloe Payne. Nai Hennington. Kulari. Bell McGregor. Rosie Lee. Kennedy Harper. Haley Gutter.
Okay, which which is now been. Usually there was. There's some virus. Okay, but I do I do. Did that. Preserving.
If we can step up behind them, maybe they'd be easy.
Big smiles.
Congratulations.
All right, excited to celebrate the arts at Frankfurt High. Really exciting for us, especially two programs that really over the last four years have gone from only kind of existing to having things that are winning state honors. A lot of thanks to our directors. So we have some some students that fall by either for the next round of state or for all state in their fields. We'll start choir. And Mr. Corney Thurman, your graduate. All by for all state choir. We want to wave to you, man, as well, and do it all together.
All together, that way it's. A more feeling about that.
All right, all state band has a couple of rounds, but making it through the first round is a huge achievement in itself. So we have two students who made it the first round of auditions. Center thirteen, so the thing second round will be the second round, so we're excited to see what they'll do there. And first player butts.
Okay, I think it'd be easy if you all just kind of.
Yeah, we'll just stand up behind you.
And congratulate. Hey, our next agenda item is comments and concerns. No one has requested to address us this evening, so we move to reports. The first is the personnel report. This month's report has a request for a leave of absence, so it requires board approval. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
Some.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, and the leave of absence is approved. The next report is the orders of the treasurer.
A couple of things that I got clarification on after I sent my notes. On page two, there is a purchase of calculators. Just curious where those were. Those were at Frankfurt High School. Those were scientific engineering calculators. Um, you do see a late invoice on a pep supplies, the cinch bags that we give every student. Student that attends pepper on page three. Also on page three, I think I put this in my notes, but the lift rental to fix the scoreboard, the scoreboard is fixed on all four sides at F D Wilkinson Gym. And we have on order a protective net to go underneath it so that that problem won't happen again, hopefully. We're just waiting on the net to get here to have it installed. There on. On page four, this is a short one, too. It's only four pages long. About three quarters of the way down, you see professional evaluation system for $4,514. That's something that I've, you all are actually using that I sent you your login credentials for the super eval system. That's what that's for. I'm keeping my things in there. And also I've asked all of the directors and principals to keep theirs in there, too, for their evaluations. And that's coming from a title. I can't remember off the top of my head if it's four or five, but it's coming from either title four or five. And I do also just got in the last hour on up that page you see for K A S C, which is Kentucky Association of School Councils, our yearly membership and testing graphs. I really like the testing graphs that they do. I got them in my inbox about an hour ago, so that's another visual representation of the testing data that I can provide for the board. Once I can print it for you. I think we'll see about ten minutes.
Any questions? Let me ask.
On page three, there's a Dell marketing. Eight hundred twenty four dollars, twenty nine cents, MHS fan. Construction windows, different smell, something. The E B.
That was the, that was the band red band director's last upgrade. Is the boss was failing something else.
For the performance, the that's 2,540 cents. That's, is that a one time cost or what?
We kind of, it's it's yearly if we continue to use it, but training was included in that one, too, which on an initial. It's usually not included.
Do we have a different permission evaluation system that we're placing?
No, we just used our own sheets that we made. But this is a place where they can put their professional growth plans in, do their self reflection, upload evidence for their evaluation. We kind of had that in the past.
And on down there, it's a thousand three hundred eighty one dollars thirty four cents for P S replacement.
It's in the basement. It helps the internet down here, so we use the flood money from sour to replace that. Basement, it's really the only concept replacing here. Does something internet wise.
I can explain it. Tell me if I explain it correctly. If the electricity goes out, we can still use internet because of that device.
Do we have those in all the buildings or just that one?
Those are everywhere in closet that we have. So our barrels, our world's going for period of fifteen minutes or so where it's bad.
Anything else? Hey, is there a motion to approve the orders of the treasurer? We have a motion in a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. And the orders are approved. And next is the treasurer's report.
This is for the month of October twenty twenty five. In the general fund, we took in $471,000 with 750,000 in expenditures, taking our ending balance to one million five hundred eighty thousand dollars. Building fund, no receipts this month. Did have 376,000 in expenditures just to close out our construction fund. So you can see down below that the construction fund took in those 376,000 receipts. The the balance there is zero until we started a new project. Food service fund took in $77,000 with 71,000 in expenses, taking their ending balance to $526,000. And then Fila seven, oh, 7,500 in receipts with 14,400 in expenditures, taking their ending balance to $93,000.
So you know what? Only brought in 7,400, that's not 14,000.
So the much like the rest of the Pep and Excel that they were operating when they're non contract days. So during that time, we're pretty much paying double salary. So the revenues are a little bit higher than the other months.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Rupert. Hey, the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. The consent agenda is approved. Next, tonight, we have presentations. First is a Second Street School update.
First up, there's some instructional highlights. So this is our first year with illustrative math that H Q R we have in K three, which makes us less a map and wealth. It's pretty wonderful for that coherence across the district. In addition to that, we're also doing work through the math academies and work with Pemzer. There's a leadership portion, Mr. Elmore and I have been attending, and then we have a group of teachers that are part of the math academies. In addition to that, there is the math pack work through that, where we have a teacher from every grade level here in the building, K three eight. And the math pack work is really a set of norms that we are creating through what sort of vocabulary we're going to use to, I think, in a previous board meeting where that math was being shown of understanding the equal sign. All of that is happening this year so we can create that math pack document to fully implement next year. And then we kind of, and then we also have I am training for K three. We actually have that happening tomorrow for our K three teachers. So it's kind of things that are happening within math in the building. Our reading plans and works and our initial rollout will happen this week, the Senate online and what those look like in addition to reading. We've had our H Q Rs for a few years now, so this year two for C K L A. With that, we have coaching happening. We've had them throughout the year. C T L is coaching four through eight literacy. And then in addition to that, we have gradient, so a lot of coaching happening in building due to a lot of the legislation, but a lot of support, which is great. Another part of instructions, our beginning of the year focuses were structured turn and talks where teachers teaching and now they're like, all right, talk to your shoulder partner. And we really wanted to make those more robust. The other part were the verbs and the standards. So if it's asking a kid to analyze versus describe. And the third one we wanted to highlight was consistent instructional strategies, whether that be how kids tap out letters when they're decoding words to the math pack work. And so that is kind of now shifted for our middle of the year. With that, that structured turn and trust will really happen through an internalization process. So as we're backwards planning and teachers are looking at their H Q R, they're saying when would appropriate timing to kind of highlight those turn and talks. And we've got some strategies from C T L. We have some strategies last year from Thoughtful Classroom, so a few different things that teachers can implement with the verbs in the standards. That's also going to happen through that internalization and developing, you know, shifting from learning targets to learning intentions and success criteria, which we had a talk today in our instructional meeting. And Second Street will be having that conversation with teachers on the sixteenth of this month and then full implementation in January. And then go into that consistent instructional strategy, no matter what classroom you go into, having those intentional learning, learning intentions and success criteria would be very similar. So kids understand what that looks like room to room and then that internalization practice, as well as other things from the books we're putting in across grade levels. Mr. Elmore and I were talking about that, some phonics instruction, and then just making sure everything is very coherent. Next up, some K S A celebrations. So overall, middle school and elementary were yellow, but you can see all the green and blue below, which is pretty exciting to highlight and making some gains, I think. So really important things to highlight are our quality of school climate and survey. Elementary being blue and middle school being green. So our kids are saying that they enjoy being here and so happy place to be and love. Next up, our novice reduction, just things to highlight. So our fifth grade writing, you can see went from 39% down to 21. This obviously is a different group of children, but it is the lowest it's been in five years. Fifth grade social studies also a drop. It's kind of been hovering around those mid forties, high forties. Fifth grade social studies also a drop. It's kind of been hovering around those mid forties, high forties and dropped thirty one percent. And then seventh grade science, it's right about the hair where it was five years ago, but it's only dropping from forty one percent. So some fun things to highlight with our novice production. Other areas to highlight with our KSA is fourth grade science is the highest we've had in five years when it comes to proficient and distinguished, as well as eighth grade writing is at fifty percent, highest it's been. And seventh grade science is the highest spin. This is even pre COVID scores, which are fun. Fantastic that we are back and even better where we were. Okay. Highlighting on behavior intervention and support. So in our August SPD meeting, we reviewed our behavior policies and always are revisiting those and see how we can improve. So we're updating and consolidating this summer. We developed citizenship policy and now it's kind of time to dissolve some other ones combined. So we're doing that work. And then I'll skip down to the second or the third bullet that we actually have a behavior committee with teachers that are ten teachers plus admin. And we're meeting on the eleventh to finalize some things. We're also piloting the house system in seventh and eighth. Where groups of children in seventh and eighth grade are a part of house that earn points that they get to have reports. And that is the House of Steel, Ewing, Shelby, Holmes, Paul Sawyer, and Murray, straight Frankfurt oriented with the names. And then our goals, as we continue with our behavior, is to just revamp, reteach and relaunch some of the things we already have in place. Highlighting our social emotional learning. We've had character strong for a few years now, but something we are doing a little differently is highlighting and celebrating those kids. So you see our monthly kiddos get that certificate and PTSA has partnered with us to make the key change. And so one per homeroom is getting celebrated for respect. You can see, and obviously it was respect, September responsibility, November gratitude, and December is empathy. So that's what we kicked on today. We talk about these every morning on morning meeting and then we celebrate them at the end of the month. So fun way to celebrate kids in any way. Next up is our family connection. So very proud. We are family friendly four years in a row. And to that, I think one fun event that really highlights our family connection is our Thanksgiving. And so that happened two weeks ago. I've had a huge success. Lots of families out from preschool all the way up to eighth grade. I think in past years, we thought maybe we didn't get as many parents for the middle schoolers, but those parents realize this is the last time they get to come. So they fill up quite quickly. So good to have them. We also updated our family engagements policy this year with a focus on what we're doing for quarters for families. So our family nights actually happening this week with about a minute. Um, and shifting, we're having K three focus on literacy. Third grade will have some math in there. We're introducing our backpack buddies for a group of kids. And then our uppers, our fourth or eighth will kind of have a little bit of all content areas. But it was important to our SPM, we want, you know, you have those parent teacher conferences that are like three, three times a year. We want to open those up all year. So anytime a parent wants to meet with the teacher, it was grade level that they schedule that, make that happen no matter when and not have to wait for that quarterly event. And then we're more of a informative coach or informative and celebration on these other nights. So we're going to get feedback from parents and see what they would like to see next quarter. Speaking of our family nights, December third, fourth through eighth grade will happen together and then December fourth, K through three. So I'll be meeting with a chunk of parents for about twenty minutes to go over some general things that are happening here at Second Street. Talk about some expectations, hot topics like the dress code, behavior and a few things. And then they will transition to visit classrooms. And then K through three will have more of a literacy focus and learning about what CKLA look like. And I'm sure math will come up, so we're not going to neglect that anyway. So if parents have questions on that, we'll highlight those as well. And just to journalist some more things to celebrate, I kind of went back to the beginning of the year, the things that have happened. We haven't had an updated school handbook in quite some time. I had some old copies in our SPDM, got an updated school handbook and pushed out to families this year. We've done our parent square rollout, which has really been fantastic. I think we're getting a lot of families that are sometimes hard to reach or responding on parent square. That's going really well. Also kind of a one stop shop instead of multiple apps. We sent our second and third graders to the YMCA for swim. That was a great event, followed by then they got some lessons during pep. Sixth grade participated in yes day beginning year, which is that picture down at the bottom, like your children. Um, we got highlighted in Kentucky living, all about our kind of being in front of everybody, not taking away phones from students. We're still seeing that as a positive benefit here at Second Street. Our Chinese program is probably the best it's ever been here at Second Street, the way they're hiring. The teachers is a little different and you can definitely tell, but our kids are learning Chinese, so some of them can talk to you in Chinese. So it's going really well. And Ms. Joyceanne, this one here are doing an excellent job. Um, let's see Veterans Day. We still have some Veterans Day pictures right outside the library. We had a celebration explaining to kids the thirteen folds of the flag. So lots of things happening on Veterans Day this year. We had our first River Rat Market where we had vendors set up to raise money for our eighth grade DC trip, which was a great success. Excited to continue that. End of unit celebrations are happening with our EL and CKLA work. So you'll see a kid dressed up in Greek attire. Because one grade level just finished Percy Jackson, another second grade group is learning about ancient mythology. So that will carry on once they get to those grade levels. Um, we had trunk or treat. It got written in this inside this year, and that might be something we have to keep up with because it was really a great turnout. I had several people say they don't think they've ever seen more families in our building than on trunk or treat night. It's a great way to get people in here. We have fifth graders attend this town. That was actually highlighted on local news stations. It's a facility where we go in and we have a governor, we have a mayor, and they all get to work in these facilities and kind of understand how just the economy works. And it's been great. Beta has already, we've recognized them at four meetings. They're off to a great start. So it's STOP. They qualified as well for a few things. Our school life fundraiser raised about the same money, around fifteen thousand, which goes straight backs to our kids. We're paying for all of our field trips to go to the Nutcracker, taking our classes there as well as best Christmas budget ever. So able to not ask families for that type of money before the holidays. Um, and then a huge PTSA shout out. They've done amazing things all year. And hopefully you saw as you walked in the hallways. They continue to provide joy to our kids and staff. So they deserve a special shout out. And we're not even halfway done. So a lot more needs to be opened. Any questions?
Did you skip over six, seven day intensely? That's a thing, you know.
Yeah. And it was also sixty seventh in school. So we had, Ms. Bramble came in with sixes on one hand, seven on the other earrings. Teachers, grade levels had shirts and then KSU scored a point, making the score sixty seven to whatever. And that got our kids really ranked up. So it's a very exciting, I care, it's like a true. Yes, I'm glad.
Yeah, I think teachers are probably getting a little tired of six.
I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, the next presentation is on the Kentucky summative assessment data.
Okay, so this is a really long document, but you do have it in front of you. Okay, so the first three slides, and please stop me because I'll start going and just stop me if you have a question. So this slide and Mr. Elmore, Ms. Sands, Mr. Rogers, chime in where you feel. This first slide is just an overview of Second Street Elementary. So grades three through five. So you can see at the top in the top bar that yellow shows you that overall in elementary at Second Street School, we were yellow with our overall index being a sixty three point eight, which you can see based on the yellow range there is closer to green than it is to orange. So we're moving in the right direction and we were orange last year in elementary school. So, and you can see the way in reading and math, we were green at a fifty seven point seven. And those two columns before that are how that green is made. So you take what your status score was, which was medium for us this past year, but we increased by one point one point. So that made that made that green fifty seven point seven. So we were medium and we increased and we went from yellow to green in reading and math. And all students in grades three through five take reading and math. So every single student took that assess, those assessments unless they are EL students in their first year and they only take math. Science, social studies and writing, you can see that our status was medium. We went up eleven point four index points. So we increased significantly. So medium and increased significantly took us from orange to green in science, social studies and writing in grades three through five. We skipped yellow altogether. Went straight from orange to green. In the quality of school climate and, oh, sorry, science, social studies and writing, fourth graders are the only grade that takes science. And social studies and writing is fifth grade only. Quality of school climate and safety survey, you can see that our status was high. We increased five point four index points. So we increased significantly, making us blue, which is very high. We went from orange to blue in that quality of school climate and safety survey, which like Ms. Sam said, that's a pretty big deal to us. We want, number one, kids have to come to school feeling safe and like they belong. So does anybody have any questions on that slide? This is the same slide, but for middle school. So overall, yellow at sixty three point seven, but if you look at the yellow range, we were yellow last year also in middle school. We are just so close to being green in middle school. Reading and math, which is taken by all sixth, seventh and eighth grade students, we scored medium and we increased point seven tenths of a point. So that's made, we stayed green. We were green last year in reading and math in middle school. Science, social studies and writing, science is taken by seventh graders only. Social studies and writing are taken by eighth graders only. And we were medium and increased five point five index points. So we were green again in that area. So we are increasing, maintaining there. And the quality of school climate and safety survey, we were medium and we went up five point four index points. So we increased significantly, which took middle school, middle school from orange to green on the quality of school climate and safety survey. So that's a, a big jump in middle school. And then moving on to the high school, this is where we saw our only drop. Overall, overall Frankfurt High is, was, is yellow with a sixty two point five. Scored low in reading and math, which is just tenth graders. So it's a different group of kids every year. And we went down three point two points, but in KDE terms that is maintaining. So we are orange low. We went from green to orange. And we figured out that was about how many kids, six kids that scored lower than the previous group. And we can't do with high school with KSA like we do with Second Street, where we can compare this group of kids in third grade to how they score in fourth grade. It's one group of kids that take the tests at Frankfurt High. Um, science, social studies and writing, we were low, but we increased significantly, eight point four points. So that took us from orange to yellow. So moving in the right direction there. Quality of school climate and safety survey, we were high and we increased. So we are green there. Post-secondary readiness, which is determined by ACT, any other college benchmark assessment like Coyote or any other, or compass, any other means that we can find to do that, plus CTE, career and tech ed, industry certifications, plus dual credit classes. So we were at a ninety one point six in the high range and we increased. So we went from yellow to green there, which is awesome. And graduation rate, we were very high and we increased point seven tenths of a point at ninety nine point three percent, which is very high. And we topped out at a hundred percent graduation rate. So we're really close. We went from green to blue there. And that's a four and five year rate. So if it was a student who didn't graduate last year, they're still counting for us this past year, the year before. If that makes sense. I'm going to keep going. And this is just a color matrix, just to show you how interesting it is how these colors are determined. So if you find the status on the left hand side and then look at the change on the top and then meet in the middle, that's how the colors are determined, if that makes sense. So you can, I'm trying to find it. Interesting one. Medium status, change maintained is yellow right there in the middle. You can be very high status, but decline a little bit and be green or decline significantly and be yellow. You can't go from blue to orange. You can't. And you can't go from red to green or blue in one. So, but that makes sense. Um, this is content index growth over four years from school year twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. So you can see the overall Second Street at sixty three point eight in grades three through five is higher than they've been in the past few years. The same with reading. Math went down two tenths of a point this year. Science, social studies and writing all went up as well. And those numbers are, most of those numbers are higher than they've been in previous years. Um, this is reading subgroup growth. So this is where you see different ethnicities, you see special ed, you see EL and you see economically disadvantaged, which is students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And we pulled the EL numbers ourselves because we never have enough in that to have a number that's publicly released, but we do want the board to have those numbers. So we pull those for you. Which again, in grades three through five could be five kids in that EL population. You have to have ten in a grade for them to count. And we are nowhere near ten EL students in a grade. We have twenty one ish district wide. So you can see that we had, most of our groups went up in reading with a slight drop in white, a drop in African American and a drop in EL. And again, that could be one student there, depending on how many are in grades three through five. The next one is math. We have a little, little more work to do here. You see a, it's yellow, but it's still a slight drop in white students in math, but you see an increase in African American and Hispanic and Latino. A decrease in two or more races, special ed and EL and an increase in economically disadvantaged. The next one is science. No huge decreases here. A couple of maintaining on science, which this is just fourth grade. Remember it says grades three through five because it's included in the three through five data. But this science test is just fourth grade students, last year's fourth grade students. So even the ones that are yellow, they maintained, they did not go down. So we did see increases there and no decline in science. And then social studies is, it says grades three through five also. Um, but it is just grade five. If only fifth graders take this assessment. And we increased across the board here except for special ed. And I'm going to tell you all a little bit about some of the things we're talking about as far as putting things in place moving forward, especially of being a big group of that. And then writing is also just fifth grade here, not grades three through five. It's just fifth grade. And you can see that we increased, other than in EL, which you saw a pretty big decrease. The other, the increases were astronomical in fifth grade writing. Those are big jumps in numbers. And then here's the quality of school climate and safety survey. So you see last year we had a two point ish drop. And we went back up over eight points this past full year in grades three through five for the quality of school climate and safety survey. Anybody want to, Ms. Sands, add anything about elementary? Any questions before we move on to middle school? Um, this is content index comparisons for the last four years for middle school. So, and these colors are based on KTE, KDE colors. So um, and these colors are based on KTE cup, KDE colors. So I would love for that sixty three point seven to be green. But it falls within the range of KDE growth of less than two points. So it's a maintain, even though it's higher than the previous year. But you can see that a lot of those numbers went up. Social studies dropped a little bit. But most of them went up in overall content indexes. Um, this is reading subgroup growth. Um, we only had two groups grow in reading in grades six through eight and all students in grades six through eight take reading. Although we were green overall in reading and math. Um, you see some slight declines in African American and Hispanic or Latino. And two or more races is a bigger decline, but you do see special ed did go up, EL did go up. Economically di- disadvantage went down a little bit, so um working on diagnosing those and what we need to do next. Uh, this math, grade six through eight, all three grades take this. So there is a slight increase at the top, at Y and a slight increase at two or more races, but you see we either maintained or went down in other areas. Also working on diagnosing those in the middle school. Science subgroup growth, you see some pretty big jumps here. Um, except for two or more races and special ed, they both went down a little bit. EL, they didn't, we did not even get that data. It was so small. There were no EL students. That's why it was so small um, in seventh grade, cuz that's just seventh grade. Um, in science. But you can see that humongous jump in economically disadvantaged. Big jump in African American and a big jump in Hispanic or Latino. And a lot of these are suppressed also at the, when they're tested at an individual grade level. Um, so we pull those numbers out for you. Uh, social studies is just eighth grade. See some gains there and a couple of drops. Pretty big drop in African American. Where, um, those are now freshmen. They won't take the assessment again until they are juniors in high school. But we can still put some things in place for them to prepare for that. Writing, um, again, growth overall with the exception of African American, again. That's eighth grade only. These are now ninth graders at Frankfurt High. Uh, that we can target and put some things in place for there. Uh, one of the things that Frankfurt High can tell you has started that they haven't done in recent, at least in the last three years is provided some type of reading intervention, reading and writing intervention, which they are doing. Um, that's tip normal at the elementary and sometimes middle school levels. But they have purchased a program and they are pulling those kids daily that aren't where they need to be, just like we do at the lower grades. We've been doing the math thing for a while at Frankfurt High, but not the reading. And now we're working on that as well. Um, and we all know that writing, when we focus on writing, we can't just focus on writing and reading. Writing is across all content areas, especially social studies, science. Um, so focusing on that there also. Um, this is middle school quality of school climate and safety survey. And if you remember, they went up quite a bit, thirteen points. This is a historic look at percentage of proficient and distinguished. So Ms. Sam's highlighted a couple of the increases in proficient and distinguished in her slideshow, but then you also see some decreases here. None are huge, um, but we still need to be moving more students into those two columns from the novice and apprentice columns. Even if we can move from novice to apprentice, that puts us in a better spot. Um, math. Same here. We have a But you can see low number of distinguished in math here. We need to be moving more in that direction. And this is grades three through eight, not just elementary or middle school. Um, science, you have four and seven here. So you can see we increased in proficient and distinguished here by over eleven percentage points. Science has been a low area for several years. Um, I think they reset the um cut scores and standards based on that because it had been a statewide problem, so. Social studies, grades five through eight, we saw a four percent uptick in proficient and distinguished here. The combined writing, you have five and eight here. We are seeing an increase there as well. We've gone from eighteen point five percent proficient and distinguished in twenty twenty-three to thirty-eight percent in twenty twenty-five. So we gained twenty percentage points. I'm moving on to Frankfurt High. You can see their content indexes here. So overall, um, Frankfurt High went up about five points on their overall index. Reading, of course, reading and math, of course, both went down a little bit, which is what caused that orange in reading and math. The science, social studies and writing all went up. Um, and of eleven points, nine point four points. And remember, those are only, every single one of these is only tested at one grade level. Um, grade ten, which is reading, you see your subgroup growth here. Um, it, which is expected with the decrease in the overall score. And all of the subgroups went down except for Hispanic and Latino. Math subgroup growth, um, maintained or went down except for Hispanic and Latino. And those are again, only grade ten. So a whole different group of students will be taking that assessment this year. Um, science, you see some increases here, but you also see a couple of decreases. And again, one grade level could be a handful of students that, that's causing the uptick or causing the downtick. And social studies is just grade eleven as well. Um, some increases and a couple of decreases there. But mainly increases. And social studies was a spot that we were looking at last year, like wow, why was it so low? Glad to see it going up. Um, writing, which is just juniors again, just grade eleven. See some big improvement and see a couple of drops also, again, one grade level. Um, graduation rate, you can see historically where we are. That graduation rate that Ms. Kikendall put in here for school year twenty-five, it says ninety eight point six. That is including PTA. We had one not graduate in PTA, so it takes it down a little bit. It's Frankfurt High's graduate is graduation rate is ninety nine point three, but these include PTA. In post-secondary readiness again, um, we saw a decrease last year, but we recooked and got back up again this past year. And this is historic proficient and distinguished data for grade ten. Again, this is the definitely apples to oranges because they don't take it again. It's the only time they take it. The state assessment when they're at high school is in grade ten for reading and math and eleven for science, social studies and writing. So you can see we went down a little bit. Math, the same, went up or yeah, went up just a little bit. Science, we went from three percent proficient and distinguished to sixteen percent proficient and distinguished. But you see there are zero distinguished. They're all in proficient, which I think was the case last year. I don't think we had any distinguished last year either, if I'm remembering correctly. But we're at least moving them from apprentice to proficient and maybe even novice to proficient. Uh, so. Social studies went from twenty percent proficient and distinguished to twenty six point six. Trying to get back to that twenty twenty-two of forty-two percent. Uh, writing, we went from thirty-four percent to thirty-six percent proficient and distinguished. And then the next slides are the historical data that you all love to see and that I love to see. This is the class of twenty twenty-seven. So these were tenth graders last year. They're juniors now. And you can see their reading scores from third grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade and tenth grade. So there's no fifth grade score because COVID. That was the COVID year. And then there's no ninth grade score because they don't take it in ninth grade. So you can see where we were in grade four with reading prior to COVID. And then COVID, and we're working our way back up. And we still have work to do in both reading and math. But if you look at that year after, in math especially after COVID, and you see how low that is at twenty five point nine percent. And it's slowly ticking back up with a decrease this year, but and then you have the same thing for class of twenty twenty-nine. And there's no twenty twenty-eight because they didn't take it this past year. They didn't take reading. These were the, these are our freshmen. So you have four, five, six, seven and eighth grades. You don't have third because that was their COVID year. Uh, math looking better than reading here. And then they start to look, these are um, current eighth graders. You can see the overall increases there in reading and math, a pers- percent proficient and distinguished. Um, those have gone up each year since they were in third grade. They didn't take a test in COVID years as they were second graders. And these are our current seventh graders. This is that fifth grade group that we were a little bumfuzzled with their I-ready scores and with their KSA data two years ago. Um, you can see, and in sixth grade, in grade five, we were, you see where we were bumfuzzled with that yellow bar. That's quite a bit lower than that red bar when they were in fourth grade, but we have gotten it back up in twenty twenty-five. And then this next one are sixth graders currently. So you have their third, fourth and fifth grade scores here. Positive um, increase in breathing, a little drop in math this year, this past year. Then, um, these were your fourth graders last year currently in fifth grade. This will be your last group because you're grade three that took it last year. We don't have fourth grade data yet to compare it to. Some work to do there in reading for sure. Um, also wanted to highlight some ACT accomplishments. I had sent this out via email um, last week. But I also wanted to put this out here, some accomplishments and some things to work on. So you can see from twenty-one, twenty-two, all the way to twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we've gone from nineteen point two down to eighteen, down to seventeen point nine, back up to nineteen point nine this past school year. And the state average is eighteen point one. Um, so our ACT composite for that junior class last year was one point eight points higher than the state average, which is wonderful. Here you see just a little demographic graph. And the only ones you see on here are white and African American because they're the only ones that populate. But you see, we have a little gap there that we need to start to focus on a little more heavily than we have in the past. Um, so really getting to work on naming and claiming those kids. Well, not these kids, but the ones that are coming up because it's a different class that'll take it. And they won't even take the ACT. They'll take the SAT. So we're, we're, it's an uphill climb right now, but we're going to work on it regardless. Um, and this one has all of the subgroups that populate. You can't really see the lines, but they're all right there together. Um, you see economically disadvantaged, non-economically disadvantaged. They're all within a two-point range. Um, we don't have any uh, military or anything like that that we've marked right now, so. Um, this is benchmark achievement rate. So this is the percentage of our students in that class that reached benchmark on English. You can see we've taken that from fifty-one percent forty percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, and now it's at sixty percent. And the state average is forty-four percent. Uh, this one is reading. So you can see we're at fifty-nine percent up from twenty-two, twenty-three, forty percent. Um, and the state average is forty-one percent. And these are those benchmarks that they have to meet to not have to take a remedial class when they go to college. That doesn't count towards their graduation requirements and that they have to pay for. Uh, math, same way, not as high as the others, but still higher than the state average, about ten points, forty percent for us, thirty percent for the state average. And then um, just some accomplishments I wanted to highlight here. This is a ranking of districts that are in the Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative. So if you look at Frankfurt High School, it's hard, I have to explain it this way. These are just high schools, not districts. Because some of the districts in the co-op have multiple high schools like Fayette County. Um, Frankfurt High School alone in the state, out of every high school in the state, which is approximately two hundred and fifty-five high schools, public high schools, um, is ranked twenty-fifth in the state for their ACT composite. And their rank in CKEC high schools is seven out of forty-three high schools. And you can see we're only one composite point away from number one, which is Boyle County High School. Um, so not sure what this will look like next year with the SAT, but our goal is to be in the same position, if not better. Um, and this one shows us as a district, which includes PTA for us. And these districts include other high schools as well. So you can see that in the state, we are ranked fourteen out of a hundred and seventy-one districts in ACT composite. And our CKEC rank out of thirty-two districts is third. Um, and you see that composite's nineteen point six there instead of nineteen point nine. It has PTA in there as well. I think that's it for the slideshow. But I also wanted to um, just point out a couple of things. We even discussed today in our instructional meeting, just some things we're gonna work on to target some of those gaps in demographics. We talked, Ms. Kikendall right now, she's finishing up the demographic data for the board on extracurriculars and athletes. But once she finishes that this week, she's going to pull every student in all the grade levels that are tested for the principals, for the instructional coaches. Um, and just make sure these, that everyone knows who these students are. Um, because some of them we can see visually and some, we know if a student has an IEP, but we don't always know if a student qualifies for um, free or reduced lunch. And that's our biggest percentage of um could, of that consolidated student group are free or reduced lunch students. Um, so just making sure that we are, that our teachers know who's sitting in their classrooms. And who's here and could be here with just a little bit more of a push, if that makes sense. Um, and really focusing on naming and claiming those students and figuring out what it is that's, that we can do to make some movement there. And we talked a lot about special ed today. Um, and just ensuring that we are teaching our kids, our special education students how to use their accommodations, that they're not walking into a testing situation cold and not knowing number one, how to use their accommodations. Not number two, we have to use so many bodies to provide accommodations in that small window of time that sometimes they walk in and they've never even met their accommodator. So um, putting some strategic things in place, Miss Staples, are you here? Jump in at any time. And if putting some strategic things in place to make sure that they get to spend time with their accommodator prior to meeting them for the first time on a testing day, that they know how to use their accommodations. They know how to ask for them, that the accommodator knows how to provide them. Uh, we want our special education teachers are, they are our strategy specialists. We want them to pick who is accommodating for who and who am I accommodating for that is right on the bubble that I think can move. Uh, and that I think I, we can, you know, does that make sense? They can't accommodate for every student, but just being real strategic about who is placed with who and who is providing those accommodations. Those were the big things we talked about today. Um, is making sure we are identifying who these students are. If we don't know who they all are, and we don't, um, and once we identify them, where are they and what do we need to do to get them to the next level? You mind?
So do teachers have, or are they provided the time or the opportunity to look at individual student data in depth? And the reason I ask this is because, you know, there's always some low-hanging fruit, you know, and students that could pretty easily be bumped from one category to the next. Uh, and maybe using some information from I-Ready or whatever to see where the weakness is, and I mean, do we do that on a regular basis?
And we're about to do our second round, started today at high school by ready to create, so we're excited to see. First phase of our reading intervention plan, and that is the goal is to perceive everyone as seen there, and then also always more of the full kids. Which we've seen that around with us, but then what's the thing, so, so the first time come, we'll do that second round of data, the hardest thing is that we don't do it. She said one time, yes, what did it best shows us what's happening for these tests and then how it's done. So I already spent a big help this year. Um, again, second round after reading intervention, we're gonna see is it some, it's been something directed, drawn, worked out how we refine it, and it's really about, said, all those kids that are right on the cusp, what are we doing to make sure everybody's moving out, but especially this student survey.
Same, we are ready to say next week as well, so we'll look at that growth from beginning to here, um, and then start looking at prepared on lead at KSA.
And I think they, I think you would both agree that we definitely do a better job of looking at the individual student data with I-Ready than we do with this. Um, but that's what this work hopefully will lead to is us sitting down with say, Miss Staples is a special education teacher, if she's got a certain caseload, I want Miss Staples to look at her caseload and where they scored. And how close were they? And determine where they go from there. Um, and same with any, I'm using special ed as an example just because we specifically talked about strategies for that today. Um, but.
And I mean, I think sometimes it could be just a little adjustment here or there that could put those kid, you know, whereas with the, you know, those that are in novice, we know we've got some serious work to do, the remediation intervention.
I think the struggle with the KSA data is that it's one day, it's one week, and that's how people look at it. So really a-also trying to shift that mindset of it is one week, it is one day, it is one measure. But if we are doing all the right things in the classroom and really putting high-yield instructional strategies into place, then that will just be an added benefit, if that makes sense.
And that was gonna be my next question. Uh, with respect to the spring I-Ready data. Uh, and this, did you see any correlation? I mean, was it close?
Uh, we're gonna do that next round, we kind of put that in that number down, that's industry.
We had that last, this, this, we have, uh, this, and then also with SAT shift there, um, they're much better, we use a cert with, with ACT, which is a good practice test. College Board has the SAT practice test, which is on the same platform, it is the same test, and so we have done more of that, but I'm excited because that should correlate a lot more with where we are with SAT. Uh, past, and then first round of known and colon, having no idea what they're doing. Yes, very promising results. Talked to, uh, we had top three each grade level last board, getting what we had, a lot of kids that are already at or above benchmark. Um, our biggest concern was for any test, I think the area with it, that's a problem, so we've worked on the backside. Content now is important to create these tests, but it is just as important to the high school level of student buy-in. Um, having kids be willing to get KSA, it has to be the last ten days of school. A high school isn't last ended school, uh, sometimes it's really hard even buying it, and so it's much more, we'll see more fastest, having measures there to have kids bought in, invested in, demonstrating what they can do. They have a little more skin in the game with ACT, uh, and with SAT, again, we started off in a good place, but I'm excited to clear those results because this test is so close to what it is. So we started a really good place, our next one will be January, um, and that will be the full battery with accommodations for all of our students, so it should be really at your measure in January for early SAT. And I'm looking forward to having that all winter, spring, and then our final SAT this year.
Speaking specifically to something you said about looking at, KSA scores are not ready, uh, fourth grade. Uh, it's required to have reading intervention plans for any student, KSA did not score proficient or distinguished. That's 31 kids, 31 kids. And the, and the challenge we're facing, another challenge that, uh, what we're looking at, and Sam's done a great job working on it is, you've got some kids based on our ready results, that's the first time, they're a good go, they're at grade level, they're where they're supposed to be, yet they scored a apprentice or novice. So it's like, is it that, what's it that telling you? Uh, and the big, the, the big thing is they are gonna have a reading intervention plan, and we're gonna do these backpack studies, which we're excited about, see how, and what it, then it becomes, is it, is it just an effort attitude type thing? Or, you know, what is, uh, but they are gonna get, of course, we have 61 students, uh, on Wednesday and Thursday, I think, that will be getting support specifically, uh, for reading intervention, uh, because that's from that literacy grant that we have. So we're excited about that, and you're exactly right, you said it, uh, I think maybe a month ago, Gina, uh, about each number has a name. And I think, uh, what the admin team is saying is, who are these students specifically? And I think that that's what I see our administrators doing, um, Miss Peach, uh, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Trainer, we're naming these students and we're trying to focus off the body that's, of course, they need, so that they're successful. Uh, and that's one thing that I'm passionate, excited about, because I'm learning all over. Um, you know, about phonics, the need for awareness, they don't have those foundation skills. They don't, they don't have it, I don't wanna say they don't have a chance, but it's so hard for them to get called back up at the higher levels. And so, um, that's exciting to me, I've seen here with the seventh grade school, yes, they've got the foundation, okay, let's keep moving. Well, that's the same thing we want to do, we have Pelly, which is at our preschool level, it's brand new this year. We have 42% of our kids where they're supposed to be in preschool. Uh, then you look at our break dance, which is my kindergarten, and we have 52% are ready for first grade. Um, and so we're beginning to have that data, but how are we using it? And the Staples and the staff are doing a great job of how are we gonna use this data to improve across the board for our students? So, so I do a little passionate about it, is exciting, exciting.
So does KSA provide any, like on an individual student, do they provide any data? I guess about where the weaknesses are, or there's nothing there to go?
It's just the score report they arrived last week, it's right, it's number, and maybe you're 10 points away from.
And that's why we've got the incremental, you know, assessing that we do, that's more, I've always thought for teacher, whether it's MAP or I-Ready, or it's more for teachers to use than it is, you know. But that's a little worrisome that they could be okay in I-Ready and then not so much.
For next week to see. We had two I-Ready points at that, like, is it consistent with what we saw in KSA last year? Or did the second round of I-Ready match KSA, so the first round of I-Ready didn't make sense? So we have three data points at that point, to kind of make a more sound decision.
One thing on I-Ready, because it's a diagnostic test, we do not provide any accommodations.
Yeah.
So that's hard as well, because that gives us a true picture of where a student is, which is great information. But when they take KSA testing, or they take a, a classroom test, they do get those accommodations.
On reading, right?
On reading and math, they don't, um, so it gives us a good picture, but then we've got to fill in with other ways to help students to learn how to take tests with those accommodations. And um, so for our special ed students, I-Ready's great, it gives us a good picture, but you can't use it comparatively. So we have to find some other measures to test behind those areas of needs.
Like you spoke to something, Mr. Elmore, that's super important, I'm passionate about early childhood for sure. So hearing you talk about the per- pergance, phonemic awareness at that age, the baseline, and knowing how you're doing, how you guys are doing in that area is awesome. Because it starts there, and I think the more effort you put at the baseline, what you're doing in your preschool, we may not have a ton of kids, but it's still, it's a start. Um, I think that's great.
We have another screening on December 18th.
Yeah.
So.
I think that that age group gets left out, and people don't think education starts there, but it does. And so the fact that you were able to articulate that, or just knowing where you guys are with that is, like I said, it's awesome.
We're using the same curriculum in preschool all the way through, so we have the preschool CKLA program.
That's great.
When students think go into kindergarten, and it's not a grand concept, and then they could be using that.
Just continuity of, yeah.
Birth to H5 is a big component of that big literacy grant we got, so, um, we have to spend a certain percentage of that money on early childhood. Yeah, which is nice. Um, Miss Staples was also just telling us today that today's Denver, December 1, of course, which is a big day um, in the special education world for December 1 child count, and we have 29, is that what she said? 29 preschool students qualifying right now, which is a bigger number than we've had recently, so.
But our special ed numbers overall have been growing also, and, I mean, almost exponentially, it feels like. Uh, Joe, just on a quick note, what do you think after your SAT experience last month or whenever it was? What was the biggest takeaway from students as far as differences?
Uh, I think, in this anecdote at this point, talking to the kids a little bit, but I, I do think it's a better suited test for our kids. Uh, it is not that much shorter, but it's a little bit shorter, and that was the first thing that all of them went in, worked out, like, I just had so much more time with the test. It's like 20 more minutes, but they felt, again, just a big part of it, they felt like, there's uh, a reading and a math component, that's it. So there's two sections, there's two sections in each test, so the first one is, is predictive, they get a mix of questions based on the performance on that first reading test, they'll kind of determine what their second reading test is, same for math. Uh, so we have already started, but a lot of it is talking to them about all that first section of each test, really making sure uh, you are doing your best, um, you're, you're getting the highest level of questions you can on there to be tested, and turn that second test. Because there's that mix of questions that are at a different difficulty levels, they doubt positive for our kids, because they get a little more of the build up of their confidence, uh, I heard that from the kids, and I felt like I was more prepared for that test, I felt like I had to be more than ACT sometimes, especially on the math section, the basic T, they invented three, four, five questions that they weren't as familiar with, that was it. Uh, they fall apart for the rest of the test, and they kind of just go, no, that's, and they're just kind of snowball fat, and you had those four sections. We often see, uh, the last section is science, in terms of the test, it's the easiest part of the ACT. Uh, it's mostly key graph and look at data, it's always the lowest section. And so a lot of time that was, they would get to the end, this three-hour test, and, and they've done it. Uh, we did see that, uh, especially with practice, ACT would see even the first ones, practice, they would, our lowest scores would be involved, it would be, it would not match up with the rest of the year, where most of us had that too. We did not see that on this one, again, kids came away feeling good about it, which is, as, as anything else. Uh, and then the scores we saw, they didn't, they were right there, I'm interested to see the second one, because we'd had built in, there's this built-in kind of caveat that comes directly from their first practice, SAT result, what they needed to work on. Their resources that are there for them to use, they also have through a momentum, a whole SAT prep course that we started with our juniors, but we've opened that anniversary to want to get into that, so we have kids that have been doing crap, that they've been, we're excited to talk about that and say that. Parents, so we'll see, uh, it's still gonna be the first time we take it, but I, I think it's more of an analytical test that is better suited for our kids. It's not as much, ACT is a lot about to be, you know, this information, can you tell us this information? SAT is a lot more analytical, and can you look at some information and draw some pins? Um, I think that's possibly what our kids do on a daily basis, uh, and what their strengths are. So, so again, we'll see in the spring for sure, but I'm really excited to see the chamber results, and I'll, I'll, when we have those, I'm guessing all spring, we'll just say, there's a fall, winter. There, I wanted to wait till we had a second round, just so we.
It's nice that it's adaptive like I-Ready, whereas ACT, we all would take the same form on the same day, same questions. On this one, SAT now, now, it wasn't always, but now it's adaptive based on how you are answering.
The testing structure will be a little bit, too, it used to have Tuesday, this day, that's where everybody must take tests, they give you a two-week winter. And so, uh, you used to, you had to start by 8:30, if you didn't start by 8:30, you had to go the next day. I'm not gonna say they don't care when you start, but you can even have a later, if you wanna start a group of kids later. So I think with the flexibility, I think that's gonna be very beneficial, uh, it's true, I was training, uh, our two weeks ago, and I think that's gonna be beneficial in itself to more conducive to, oh my gosh, it's not a test, is hey, this is something we've done in the team.
All data, we, we're very intentional to start the year about setting up those testing structures. Working with the junior, wanna make sure we have our accommodations, and we're in the rooms we're going to be in, on the past, we've not done that for practice test. Really trying to build up that, that sense of, I've been here before, I've done this, I'm comfortable with it, because that, again, with high schools, that goes a long way, on test day, uh, feeling that comfort, feeling fulfilled, they're ready to do it, that confidence, it's gonna be there, it's gonna dictate a lot more, but they can do in a test then. Sometimes, yeah, we're gonna, that could be a little more limiting than what they have.
Sounds good. Okay, any questions? Thoughts? I think overall, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's positive, there's a lot of overall growth, and that's, um, that's on the surface, that's what we're always looking for, and I think is that there's some very impressive growth um, in here, and uh, as you all will, we also will be um, looking a little more in-depth and having some conversations uh, just in an effort to uh, figure out how best to bring everybody along for, with the growth and the, the success. So, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all, your contributions.
Okay, we moved to new business and discussed the purchase of a bus.
So, um, you have three bus quotes, I know two people in the room who have a pretty strong opinion on which one. Um, and of course, my recommendation comes from their recommendation. Um, you have one from Bluebird, one from International, and one from Thomas. Um, based on Mr. Gaines and Mr. Driscoll's recommendations, um, I, my recommendation to you in my notes was to go with the Bluebird 72 passenger, sorry TJ. With camera and AC already installed, Mr. Gaines, um, has informed us that air conditioning is going to be a standard requirement in upcoming um, year or years, so going ahead and making sure that's in there, we would have to install a camera anyway, so um, paying to have it installed later, or paying to have it installed when we get the bus on delivery, um, would be nice. Um, one thing that is super attractive about the Bluebird bus is we can have it in six to eight months, and the International and the Thomas buses would, would be at least a year, if not longer. Um, is that accurate? Um, and Mr. Gaines also talked to one of our mechanics, and they haven't been seeing as many issues out of the Bluebird buses as they have the Thomas and Internationals. Um, Mr. Rupert, if you wanna speak up at any time on this part, I'm gonna recommend that you do finance the bus instead of purchasing it outright, just because, Mr. Driscoll, I met with Train last week, we still have a lot of HVAC work to do that we don't wanna bond, that we would love to use building fund money to do, we need to finish Frankfurt High, and we have like six or eight classrooms here at Second Street that we wanna do also. You were here that day, they need to be, they, they are not producing what the room needs it to produce, they're not big enough, they weren't big enough when they were installed, and they're not big enough now. Um, so just ensuring that we have building fund dollars to pay for that HVAC work, so we don't have to bond it. I would recommend doing the Kista route, because I did check with Mr. George from Compass, it's between a 3% and 4% interest rate. Um, 4% is, is historical for the last 10 years, so.
With respect to the Bluebird buses, um, other than the obvious seating capacity, what is the difference between the, the two? I mean, do we not, I mean, is one?
The, the biggest is your turnaround times, um, it'll be quicker. Um, they're not really, they're more app, they compare on apples that, I mean, they're, the motors are the same, the transmissions are the same. Um, Bluebird's not having as many problems out of them coming out of the factory. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's really, I, I, I can't really answer.
The specs are identical based on the bus purchase. The specs are identical based on the bus purchasing guide, it's just where they're coming from.
From one and handed it straight to the other. So the base price, I really don't know. Why the base price for the Bluebird compared to the International?
Well, what about between the two Bluebird buses? What's the difference other than three more seats?
That's it.
Well, it's not, it's, it's only actually one seat.
Three students, one seat, okay.
Three students, one seat.
That's, that's the only difference.
One more bench.
Some of the things that on your, uh, your specs, when you get the, when you go up to the seventy-five, there's a couple of them that come standard. Onto the, uh, seventy-five instead of the seventy-two, like, I think there's a, might be a change. I have to go back and look at the paperwork specifically, but there might be a change in the fuel tank to where if you, on the seventy-two. You might have to pay to upgrade to that bigger fuel tank, but on the seventy-five, it comes standard.
Oh, okay. Just little things like, okay.
You weren't recommending any of those upgrades anyways, on the seventy-two. They're expensive.
So this will, let's see. How many ista, um, financed buses do we currently have? Or do we have any, we just have three? Okay, so we've got how many that are paid off?
Hmm, no, we've got more than three buses. How many buses, how many, no, no, how many buses do we have that we're not making?
That we're still making payments on? Do we know?
One forty-nine. That we're not, yes, three. Three or four.
And how many do we have that run?
Yeah, we're only making payments on three. How many do we have that we aren't making payments?
You don't make it.
Forty-nine, one, three, seven, so four.
Four. Hey, go on in.
Yeah, but it's not in.
We want test scores to go up, we got transport suits.
With air conditioning?
It's hot on this bus.
They are supposed to, they, like I told, uh, this Saturday, that it's supposed to go into an effect in the next. It's either next year and the year after that they're gonna, that one of the specs they're gonna go to in state Kentucky is that they, they will be required air conditioning on.
Only if you're buying a new one.
Yes.
Not on your existing.
Anything you buy new, once it goes to spec, you have to order it.
But anything we have existing that doesn't have AC, we don't have to retrofit it. It's just when we, when we.
Yes.
Purchase a new list. Any questions?
Why can't we get the Bluebird faster than the other two? What's the reason behind that?
I have no word.
Just, that's just what it is, huh?
They're just, I mean, the twenty-two, it took us a year and a half to get it. Uh.
Yeah.
And County has, I know County's ordered a bunch of Bluebirds the last couple of years. Uh, they're getting one six, uh, six to seven months usually, but they're saying six to eight. Uh, I talked to them the other day, and they're saying, Bill, they may. You know, looking at around May, getting it. And I talked to them the other day. Another day, there, there was a, one county, they bought six of the new Internationals. Uh, they got six of them in the same day, and sent five of them back. Uh, with deficiencies and different things, you know, that they found on. So out of the six, they get, hold on, the parking lot, we have, they only got one, keep one of them, that'll take a bad dude stuff there.
Yeah, I think so. That's, that's not good. Which one was that, International?
You know, that's, it's crazy, because International wasn't even better.
The better, right, yeah.
Better, but I think they had so many backlog, they was trying to push it through so fast.
Making mistakes.
Any other questions? What's your recommendation, the seventy-two or seventy-five?
None of seventy-two.
Oh, yours is seventy-two?
Y'all wanna go seventy-five? TJ, we'd love to have seventy, one more bench seat in that bus.
Like I said, it's three stages. The only time you really get into a. It can benefit you well is when you go out of town. They tell you, you can only take, uh, two-thirds capacity out of town.
Oh.
You know, when you get into soccer, you know, especially boy soccer, and we've got forty-eight, fifty kids sometimes. So, you know, sometimes it can benefit, does it outweigh the difference in the money? It's just something you gotta, you gotta look at to defer.
So you, um, like in situations like that, is that, that requires a second bus to go?
I guess three kids can make a difference in everyone.
Yeah.
It's gonna cost a dollar instead of it's one thousand dollars.
One thousand per kid.
Okay, what's your?
So the buses that we're currently financing, how much is left on those notes?
So the oldest one, the oldest one will be paid, um, March twenty-seventh will be its last payment. So it, and the new one would maybe overlap just a year or nine months. Um, but we pay on that one. Ninety-six hundred a year, but, but we're a lot cheaper.
And that money comes from?
Um.
When we pay it?
General or, or building sometimes.
That, that was the, the, he's talking about there, I mean, just for reference, it's. About a hundred fifteen thousand miles right now, and you're still paying on it. So, you know, they're starting, we're. Honestly, I mean, if you go back and look at it, you're spending a lot more money on the older buses that were not giving anything for K D E four. Compared to what, you could at least get some money from K D E four.
For to push you out there.
You know, we've got so many that we're trying to upkeep right now, keep on the road, get students back and forth. And then the ones where, that are safer trips are running miles upon them so fast. You know, like twenty-two, which is our next newest bus, with, it's a twenty-two year, it's got thirty, over thirty thousand miles on it already. To where we can't split them up, because you got buses that you can't trust to send out, you know, distances, stuff like that. So our next two newer buses, one of them's pushing seventy thousand, the other one's pushing thirty. We're starting to get into that spot too.
Seventy-two or seventy-five?
I mean, I'm tempted to say seventy-five, just because, you know, three or four situations like you referred to. TJ would pay for the difference, you know, and having to send two buses instead of one. Um, that's.
If we did squeeze, they have squeezed one or two on, and they had an accident, there we are in that.
Yeah, right.
Situation too.
Right. Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, purchase and finance through. Ista, the Bluebird seventy-five passenger bus at a cost of one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, the motion carries. Gotta get a new bus. Okay, we are to superintendent's comments.
Let's say this, this district doesn't purchase buses as often as most districts do. The standard is once, one every two years, and this is the first bus we've purchased since. The twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we purchased in early twenty-twenty-two. Um, so just putting that out there. It's December. It is December. Um, like Ms. Sam's mentioned earlier, um, grabbed some pictures off of Facebook today of the hallways at Second Street School. Her PTSA and parents and students were here, she said, from Wednesday on. They started Wednesday decorating the hallways of the building just to be magical and joyful for the winter season. So, um, if you get a chance to walk around and look before you leave tonight, I highly advise you do so. Um, we obviously celebrated some marching band members tonight, but we also had four marching band members. Who marched with the Eastern Kentucky University Colonels a couple of weekends ago. In the middle is Elena DeSantis, she's a twenty-twenty-five graduate. But you have Emmeline Duff, um, Claire Butts, Brady Ellis, and Axel Brito Sadio there. Um, that they got to march with Eastern a couple of weekends ago. It's a recruiting tool for Eastern. So maybe we'll see them marching in college one day, which would be great. Um, you celebrated these ladies tonight, too, um, in their adorable uniforms. I love them. Um, placed first place at the Rumble in the Jungle, um, FHS Cheer competes this weekend in an event. Uh, I think it's called Battle of the Bows. Um, okay, some more, um, band celebrations. So you also had your round one, uh, Clara and Brady for KMEA All-State Round One. And ninth dis, ninth grade all district, you had Abby, um, on French horn. One thing that's not on here is Porte, like, an all-state choir. I don't know if anybody. Is, was a vocalist and tried out for all-state chorus, but. But it is band and choir both, very, very difficult, rigorous processes. So these students are in a room performing for high-level collegiate level professors of music. Um, it's very nerve-wracking, and the music is not easy. So, big feats for them. Um, and Ms. Sam's also talked about her family learning nights that are coming up this week. Um, in which our students will, those students who, um, have a reading intervention plan will get their backpack buddies this week, we hope. Um, and then other things, the Read to Achieve Grant is due tomorrow, so we'll be finalizing that before four o'clock tomorrow. Uh, Mr. Elmore and Ms. Staples worked really hard on getting, well, Mr. Elmore mainly on the CTE Innovation Grant. And the Spark Grant, which is for vocational rehabilitation, um, for special education students. Those were both submitted last week. We are still waiting to hear on our Department of Libraries and Archives grant, but Ms. Kikendall is finished. At the old board office, um, down from forty-four filing cabinets to twenty-ish. Um, so we had DocuBit came and shredded a lot of paper. Um, we do have, uh, winter sports are upon us. We do have our first home Frankfurt High School girls' basketball game tomorrow. And our first FHS boys' basketball home game is December eighth, but they play away Thursday evening. Um, so they do start Thursday, but our first home game is Monday, December eighth. Backpack Buddies Program again, um, will begin this week with those family learning nights. Um, I have scheduled first round of staffing meetings for school year twenty-seven with both principals, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Elmore next week. And we have added an additional pre-case screening on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. We are really trying to get those preschool students in here and identified if they need to be, um, whether it be disability or at risk. So a lot going on, and it's almost the holidays.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is a closed session. Is there a motion to move into closed session pursuant to KRS sixty-one, eight-ten, one-F? Discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student. Without restricting that employee's, members, or student's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret. So, but, okay. We have a motion second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. We will go into closed session.
Thank you all if you need something to do.